Seven, okay. Is there a motion to reopen the meeting? And please remember to say your name.
McFadden, so moved.
Thank you.
James, second.
Thank you.
Bon Dima?
Thank you. Commissioner Brooks, oh, no, not here yet.
Yep, I'm here.
Oh, Commissioner Brooks, are you in favor of reopening the meeting?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Commissioner Frank, I don't think that's joined us yet. Commissioner James Hassan?
Yes.
Lynn? You in favor?
Yes.
Okay, McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner, I don't see Commissioner Reed yet, okay. Richardson?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Chinia? Is anyone opposed? No abstentions, so I have eight in favor and two absent at this point. Is there a motion to approve the prior open session minutes?
Richardson, so moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Bon Dima?
Thank you. And Bon Dima, you're in favor?
Yes.
Uh, Brooks?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, James Hassan? Okay, Lynn?
Yes.
Okay. McFadden?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
And Roberts?
Yes.
And I'm in favor. Anyone opposed? Seven in favor, and I have, um, for that vote, I have, um, three absent.
I have two absent. Who's your? Oh, Frank, okay, three absent, you're correct.
Right, okay. And then a motion to, um, approve the closed session summaries?
Richardson, so moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Bon Dima's second.
Thank you. And those in favor, Commissioner Bon Dima?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Okay, is James Hassan back?
Yes. You're also looking for Frank, though.
Okay, uh, Frank said he would be late, I don't think he's back yet. McFadden?
Yes.
Reed? Okay, Richardson?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And I'm in favor. Anyone opposed? Okay. That's seven and two absent. I am, um, like to take this time to, um, to recognize unfortunately the passing of two of our city school students. Ricky Forehand III was a sixth grader at Vanguard Collegiate Middle School. He was a fun, loving, and well-liked student. Ricky was a comical student and enjoyed making others laugh. He will be greatly missed by his family, his school community, and his friends. And Sean Harris. Sean was a fourth grader in the Holman Hospital Program. He was a pleasant, humorous, and engaging student. Sean had a very inquiry mind and asked questions during instruction. Although he was fighting the battle of his life, his focus was admirable. His gift to those who met him was how he made you feel after being with him. That was a feeling of laughter and life. We truly thank God for the gift of Sean Harris. Um, please join me for a moment of silence as we remember Ricky and Sean. Thank you. Just one, uh, one, uh, couple of things I would like to just, uh, to just say to folks. First of all, thank you to, to parents and to students and, um, staff members and the community at large for, uh, your, your flexibility or, uh, cooperation and, um, just the, everything that you've been doing to really try to help, um, as we, uh, continue to, to move forward in what we do as a school system. I know for parents, this, uh, this week, last, starting last week was, uh, an exciting one as we, uh, began our distance learning, um, journey in terms of, um, how we deliver instruction. Um, I know in some cases it's gone smoothly, in other cases you, you've had some challenges. I can only say for my own grandkids how happy they were to be able to connect with classmates and with their teacher. Um, even if it was looking at a screen, it was just exciting to get back to that connection to school. So thank you, and, um, uh, please continue on, and hopefully we will, uh, be able to see each other in person sooner rather than later, but, but we're gonna all stay safe until then. I'd also like to say that due to, um, the emergency, uh, around the COVID-19, um, health issue, that the Board Policy Committee will be temporarily suspended until the summer. All upcoming policies that were scheduled by the policy committee will be rescheduled along with all policies currently in the reader process, including JKA Student Discipline. Um, in June, the board will reassess how we're gonna move forward with the policy development process. And at this time, I'm gonna ask if there is a motion to approve the personnel, uh, employment payroll, the PEP, and the quasi judicial matters.
So moved, Frank.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Bon Dima.
Thank you. All those in favor, Commissioner Bon Dima?
Yes.
Yes, Brooks?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Okay. James Hassan?
Yes.
McFadden? Is, uh, Reed? Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm in favor. Uh, anyone opposed? Okay, so I have eight in favor and one absent.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna abstain from this vote.
I'm sorry, one abstention, okay. We'll change that, um, uh, eight in favor, one abstention. And that's it, okay. No one opposed. Okay, I'm going to now, um, review the consent agenda. Um, and, um, board colleagues, remember, uh, let me know if you'd like to pull something from the consent agenda, and if you do, please indicate what your question is so that staff might be ready to, uh, to answer those questions. First, I'm gonna say, um, item 6.01 is listed as consent, it is pulled. And that's, uh, that's an item listed as an emergency powers resolution. So item 12.01, social work services.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, it's, it's Commissioner McFadden, I would like to pull, uh, 12.01.
What's your question?
It's not necessarily a question, but it can be. I'm curious to know, um, how this is gonna impact, um, if we see this need for an increase in, um, social work services, um, what is our plan long-term? Um, and I am aware that some of the agencies, I'm not sure, um, if any of the agencies listed have non-compete clauses where they are unable to, um, work beyond a year or something like that. I just wanna gain some clarification, um, around that. So those two things, both a long-term plan for sustaining our social workers within the, the school system. Um, also have a question, um, about the level of training that, um, our external, um, social work services, um, go through, social workers go through versus, um, more internal, um, perhaps through, um, city schools or through our unions.
And Madam Chair, if I could also add a question to that, I was going to pull this one as well. This is Commissioner James. I'm interested in, in hearing from Dr. Brooks or someone else in the special ed department on how these social workers are going to be deployed as far as billable hours directly serving individuals with disabilities, um, or if they will be supplanting social work services in schools that are currently being provided for the general ed population. All right?
Thank you.
Uh, and this is, uh, Commissioner Brooks, um, also was pulling this. Um, so the question is, uh, uh, how much additional capacity does this provide? Um, and sort of is, do we currently have a gap in, uh, need in terms of new social workers versus, um, the ones that, uh, are currently serving students? And I'm trying to get a sense of that number, uh, and just trying to also get a sense of, uh, does this provide us any additional capacity? Um, and that would all be helpful information, uh, for me. And in addition to, I think, uh, Dr. Hassan said, uh, which is around, uh, or, um, uh, around your training and capacity building.
Okay, thank you. Item 12.02, is that the New Publishing Incorporated?
Madam Chair, it's Commissioner McFadden, it's Ronald McFadden, I'd like to pull that. Um, just for clarification, I know that the letter says, or the information that we received says, um, that we're already in contract with Office Depot, which can and is supporting printing needs. I understand the, um, idea, I guess, around increasing, um, our options and making sure that that happens. Um, but I'm just curious to know why we would, um, if we already have someone that has the capacity to do it, why, um, are we increasing spending right now on, um, another option?
Okay.
Um, and this is, uh, Commissioner Brooks, uh, also had a question for that. Um, I was trying to get a sense of, uh, I had heard prior to, uh, feedback when we were just getting, uh, in with the delivery of online packets, so I'm trying to figure out what exactly, or will it be printing? And then do we have a sense of the utilization of those packets? So if we're sending the packets home, how many have been picked up? How many have been actually turned in or, um, or utilized, or so that the teacher, um, can sort of re-review that? So, um, to try to get a better estimate on sort of what's the need and what we actually need to, to budget. Um, and, uh, particularly around the, the, the return rate, especially if this, if this printing is around school related costs.
Okay, uh, all right, uh, uh, okay. One portion of what you're asking seems like it might be more of the update around what's happening versus the, um, the actual procurement, but, uh, staff, if, if everybody has heard that, please, um, if we can respond to that. Uh, 14.01.
Madam Chair, this is, this is Commissioner Roberts. I have a question for actually 14.01 and 14.02, since they're potentially, I mean, the same thing in a way. Um, my question, my first question, uh, relates to the contract terms that went into effect March 26. Um, seemingly we are looking to vote on a contract that's already in place. Um, so I guess my question is, could we have potentially been, uh, notified and voted at the March 31st meeting? Uh, and secondly, I'd like to know, um, now that we're moving forward with centralizing the purchases of the Chromebooks, how does that affect schools that are moving forward or have already moved forward with purchasing their own?
Okay.
Uh, this is, uh, Commissioner Brooks. Uh, um, I had a question about, uh, so this looks like hardware, are there any associated software costs, um, to this? Or would that be coming in a different procurement? Or, um, how are we getting the internal software pieces? Um, do we need additional, uh, funds or, uh, or should be expecting, um, uh, new items to pay for, uh, the internal software components? Um, and then two, uh, given the number of, of Chromebooks that we have ordered, uh, are there ways, um, do we have a good sense of the actual number of young people who will need them? Um, and do they have the capacity? Um, I'll leave it at that, those two questions.
Any other questions? Okay, all the items have been pulled, so we'll be going through all of them. Okay, so now we're going to be, um, moving into public comment. Um, speakers from recognized groups have had the opportunity, I'm sorry, will have the opportunity to speak their normal five minutes. Um, and as I mentioned before, the board executive will then read, um, the first of the, uh, up to 10 emails that we received for public comment. Uh, first we have, I believe it's Zachary Taylor from the Baltimore Teachers Union.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Uh, the Baltimore Teachers Union just wants to start by applauding the incredibly hard work of educators and city school staff who helped launch, um, distance learning. It's been remarkable and, uh, times overwhelming to see how one extremely busy and intense week of training transformed into online classrooms, um, all while educators struggled the needs of their own busy lives. Uh, we have been excited to interact with our students again, and we want to thank families for their crucial support. Uh, while we have been eager to provide the learning opportunities our students need, educators and administrators alike, um, need to be mindful that families themselves are going, uh, through a lot and are often overwhelmed with this great shift in how we're doing education. And we need to be thoughtful about the anxiety that comes with the new platforms and practices that make up this new version of the school day. Uh, the BTU also wants to signal its support and applause for the city council resolution passed last night, calling for all students to have access to technology. Uh, this resolution was put forward by city councilman Z. Cohen. Um, he himself is a former Baltimore school, uh, teacher and BTU member. We are pleased to work collaboratively on this pressing issue, working to ensure that all students have a device and access to high-speed internet. We know this crisis exacerbates the existing inequalities that Baltimore City confronts every day, and addressing this issue is one of the many fights that is central for educational justice for students and families. And we also want to acknowledge and express our appreciation for the very regular calls and discussions we've had with the school system during this time, uh, especially with Chief of Human Capital Jeremy Grant Skinner and Chief of Schools John Davis. In many cases, we've been able to rapidly address questions and concerns, and we've also been able to collaborate on ways to improve communications for educators and families. Uh, we haven't always seen eye to eye, but during this time, it's reassuring to know that there's a place for these important conversations, and we know this need will continue. Regarding the emergency powers for the CEO, the BTU has several concerns and questions, and there's a lot of feedback right now. I don't know if everybody can try to mute who's, um, not muted right now, that'd be helpful. Um, so regarding emergency powers, uh, there's highly unusual, um, and they raise concern for anyone, uh, affected by city schools. We recognize that the resolution upholds our union's contract and our legally protected right to negotiate our salaries and benefits, working conditions, um, including hours and planning time and so on. But what we're really interested in hearing from the board with greater specificity, uh, than the resolution provides, is the reasons and the potential scenarios that require emergency powers, as well as indicating which specific board policies are candidates for possible suspension. Uh, the BTU has followed other Maryland school boards, and none of them, at least among those that are larger than us or about the same size, have pursued similar powers for their superintendent. And we've seen some superintendents outside the state gain increased authority to make, uh, larger purchases without first seeking board approval, perhaps for technology, but that does not appear to be the case, uh, or the focus of the resolution before the board tonight. Um, the public, I think, would all be well-served to know the perspectives of the school system and all the board commissioners regarding this issue. And we suggest a much more narrowly tailored resolution that clarifies the relevant scenarios that require such powers and policy suspensions. Uh, it is in this case that we could then, as BTU, provide a more meaningful comment. And in short, we and other organizations that, uh, work on educational justice in this city want to know why emergency powers are needed here when they don't, uh, we don't see them elsewhere in the state. Under what specific conditions are these powers to be used? And which specific policies could be suspended? And we look forward to hearing you all, uh, discuss that. And then lastly, I just want to address, we heard, um, several of the commissioners, uh, mention the social work contract. Um, we also are concerned note that it doubles the spending on contracted vendors for social work services, and we really want the system to work harder at hiring social workers directly. Um, going through vendors is needlessly expensive, we know it costs more. Uh, we know that we have to pay these companies an amount that guarantees them a profit, and we see significant attrition with these companies. Um, and it leads to greater discontinuity for, um, our students because of that attrition. And lastly, I just want to speak to the non-compete clause. I, I felt this personally at my school. We had a really gifted bilingual speech-language pathologist, and she was contracted. That's how she started with, um, the school system. At that point, at the end of the year, she decided she wanted to work directly with the city schools, and she wanted all the benefits that come with it, the stability, the benefits, and wanted to make her career here. But she was forced through a non-compete clause with her company, which is one of the companies listed in the procurement contract, to sign a two-year non-compete clause. And so she left the system because she wanted to work directly for a school system, she moved to Philly. And that was a big detriment to our students and to our school, and really to city schools in general. And I'm really concerned, and the entire BTU is really concerned, about how many of these vendors require these and what, what can we do about them. So I appreciate your time and your work, and, uh, I'll mute myself now.
Linda, are you there?
Commissioner Chinia, so, so she had to switch to, uh, her iPad was having issues, so she had to switch the phone number, she might not be back on yet.
Okay, so, um, Christian, I understand that the Parent Community Advisory Board is not going to speak tonight, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so can you, um, move us forward with the public comment that you have?
Absolutely, I just have one clarification for the public, um, and that's, I'll own that one. Uh, the policy committee is meeting on Tuesday to discuss the upcoming calendar and kind of the prioritization during this crisis. But again, like I said, they will reassess at June 1st ways to move forward depending on how long the crisis goes, but they'll be meeting Tuesday just to talk about policies and prioritization. So just that clarification, however. Um, as far as the public comment, we only had one from the Teachers Democracy Project, which I will read. Uh, first is, we would like to acknowledge the district and all the teachers that have worked on food access and shifting to distance learning. This is a huge endeavor, we would appreciate a response to the following questions we hear from teachers and parents so that we can be more help as, as a partner. Though most teachers have been tremendously helpful in getting families access to Google Classrooms and Blackboard, we hear that many students are still not logging on, and some parents have not received adequate communication. We would like to see a written information and tutorials about how to get on, get on, put online in case this might be a barrier for some. This will also help parents who want a refresher, as well as mentors who are often helping kids from the outside. Uh, next bullet, even as parents have access to devices, many are not managing to keep up. Parents are seeing their children struggling emotionally. This means we need to consider other means of delivering content, particularly for young children. This could include age-appropriate, uh, projects completed over time with check-ins from teachers or other approaches that are somewhat individualized to meet the needs of those struggling with home, working from home, unemployment, and demands of multiple children. Teachers tend to be, need to be protected from repercussions having to do with difficulties that they are facing in meeting these new demands. We recognize significant adjustments to expectations for delivery of content and support to students are needed. We support the BTU and all teachers and their demand to be part of the solution, and request that any new arrangement for instruction and timelines, um, be discussed upfront with the union, be treated as a new policy subject to policy review guidelines, make allowances for teachers struggling, juggling their own children's sick relatives, not include repercussions that will affect pay, evaluations, or employment status, include time and resources for teachers to receive training and any new processes and support for best practices and new instructional techniques. We received a very helpful call from an SCE today outlining the process for giving technology away. We would like to see this process and timeline detailed online as well, so parents know what to expect. We would like to know what percentage of students are logging on and what is being done to reach those not logging on. We would like to help support families in getting acclimated to the new client, climate. How can partners help with reaching out to families? Uh, if there's already a decision about school being out for the whole year, parents would like clarity in the sense of the decision-making process. Finally, we would like to hear a report on how SPED is working and what the gaps are. How's the district handling IEPs, 504s, and 101s during the shutdown? Uh, and that concludes the comment.
Thank you, Christian, I'm just checking to see if we have Commissioner Chinia back yet. Okay, I don't, I don't hear her, I think she's having problems with the, um, with being muted, so if someone could help her, um, get back on the call, that'd be great. I wanted to, um, then next go into item 6.1. Um, this was pulled and we, um, okay, Commissioner Chinia says she can hear us, but we can't hear her.
I'm looking for her phone number, I don't see it.
Okay. So Christian, should we go into 6.1, or should we go into the other procurement items first?
Yeah, let's, let's hold for 6.1 for her.
Okay, okay. All right, so then let's start at 12.01, social work services. There were some questions from three of our commissioners, so is Dr. Brooks, has she joined us?
Good evening, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Dr. Brooks, thank you.
Good evening, this is Deborah Brooks, the Executive Director of Special Education, and I will be answering the four questions that were posed. The first question, what is the long-term plan? The plan continues to be to provide at least a 1.0 FTE social worker for our schools to be able to provide both the services that are identified on students' IEPs, as well as providing support to our general education students around mental health, needs and supports for the students, as we've seen an increase in violence in the community, as well as providing additional support during this time of COVID-19, providing supports for our families, um, as well as for our students. Uh, the other question was around, um, deployment so that we were not supplanting. We've been very strategic in making sure that as we're looking at the FTEs for those schools, those FTEs that are paid for out of special education funding, to be able to, um, monitor and make sure that those, um, staff are actually providing those direct and indirect services for our students with disabilities, and then those additional funds through our concentration of poverty funds, using those funds to provide those additional supports for our general ed students and families, providing those mental health needs for any general ed students that need those additional supports within the building, and providing additional supports for the school community at large. The question around training, um, for our external staff as well as our internal staff, the contractors that are assigned to our schools receive all of the internal training just as our FTE social workers do, so any professional development that is provided for our social workers that are full-time employees with Baltimore City Public Schools, the contractors receive that, um, training as well, as well as all social workers receive statewide uniform Code of Ethics, Code of Practice, continuing education training across the board. So whether they're contracted or whether they're a FTE social worker in Baltimore City Public Schools. How much additional capacity? How much additional capacity do we need? And does this provide any additional need? By us having contractors right now, the contractors we bring on board, if we have any social workers that retire, if they retire mid-year, we bring on social, the contracted social workers until we're able to fill that vacancy with a full-time employee. We may have contractors if we begin the year with a vacancy. Also, due to the concentration of poverty, schools are able to hire additional social workers through that concentration of poverty funding. And that's why we also have additional contracted social workers in some of our buildings. But again, I want to be very clear, to ensure that we're not surplanting, we are very clear on the monies that we use regarding special education funds, that those FTEs are actually providing supports and services to our students with disabilities to ensure that we're implementing all services that are identified on the students' IEPs.
Commissioners, who had questions? Do you have any other questions? We'll start with Dr. Brooks. I think I heard you speaking.
Madam vice chair, it's, it was Commissioner McFadden.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Commissioner McFadden and then Dr. Brooks.
Thank you, it's fine. Dr. Deborah Brooks, I want to be clear because we have two Dr. Brookses on. Are you able to speak a little bit more to that non-compete clause that was raised earlier?
So we are trying to work with many of our contractors to, to work around the non-compete clause, excuse me. We do know that for some of our contractors, they like to keep that in so that they don't lose their staff. Because what does happen is, as the example that was given by our BTU partner, that there are staff that after they begin working with the schools would like to move over to the schools and then the contractors, the vendors would then begin to lose staff. So we are trying to work with some of the vendors to try not to have that non-compete clause within. And so we are continuing to try to work with many of those vendors that we know have social workers that would like to join Baltimore City Public Schools as a full-time employee.
Thank you, Dr. Brooks. And the new vendors outside of the vendors that we previously used, can you talk a little bit about those companies and how they would select it?
So some of the new vendors that have been selected, we've had experience with some of those social workers. Our supervisor of social work and our coordinator of social work are very familiar with some of those social workers because of professional developments and webinars and trainings that they have worked with those staff outside of the school system. And so they've been able to communicate and talk about what we're doing within our school system. And so they were very interested, again, as we begin to talk about the non-compete clause, trying to see if we can have more of those staff join us because they were very interested in the work that we're doing around the whole child and providing mental health supports for all of our students.
Thank you, Dr. Brooks.
Okay. Commissioner Brooks?
Thank you. So, Dr. Brooks, thank you for the update. Could you talk a little bit about the capacity? So my issue was, I was trying, I was curious as I was reading, like, is this additional capacity to provide, you know, to fill a gap, a need of services? And then also, like, where are we currently, right? So what is the total number of students? Like, you don't have to be that specific, but could you give me a sense or an estimate around sort of what is the students who are being served? And are there gaps in that service? And therefore, we need this additional fund to allocate to ensure that everybody has the right ratio of social worker to student? Also, which I don't know what it is, and would love your thoughts on sort of what that ratio is.
So this current school year was the first school year in which we allocated at least a 1.0 FTE social worker to every school. And so what we did is to ensure that all of our students, all of our students that were receiving specially-designed instruction or students who had IEPs that had the related service of social work currently on their IEPs, those students were being serviced. But what we saw was there were some general ed students that were in our schools that also needed that mental health support. So this school year was the first school year in which we provided the 1.0 FTE social worker for all of our schools. And then also by us receiving the concentration of poverty funds, schools could then elect to have additional FTE social work using those funds. And in doing so, we saw that we would then need to be able to have additional contractors available for those schools to be able to purchase additional social workers to be able to provide additional support for those schools. So if your school was allocated a 1.0 FTE social worker and you had concentration of poverty funds and you wanted to have an additional .5 or 1.0 FTE in your building, then that's when they were able to use that concentration of poverty money to do so by having a contractor. And so this expansion is for special education as well as for general education using that concentration of poverty funds. And so this is the reason why the contracts have expanded, because schools are now able to use additional funds to expand the additional social work services that are provided in their building. And as we know, that being able to provide support, the mental health support for our students that are both general ed students as well as students with disabilities, then the students are more able to be available for education and for learning.
Absolutely, and that's really, really helpful. And so I heard the one, everyone, one FTE at every school and then schools having the ability to add there. And so do you have a sense of capacity, right? So if I'm at a school with, like, so you're saying that basically if I got one full-time social worker at a school, that they're, they're working with the whole, not the total population, but it might be more generalized population. But first, it was, it was for young people who had particular need for that, whether it was in their IEP specifically. And then, so this is going to allow general folks to, young people to have access to clinical services and so, or a social worker. Am I getting that, am I hearing you correctly?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And so is that capacity, do we, so this contract, do we know that if we need more? Or will that just be sort of something, so these are just kind of like, these are some potentials that people can pick from in order to sort of, you know, address that gap?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hi, Linda Chinia, can you hear me again?
Oh, yes, now we can hear you, Commissioner Chinia.
Thanks, okay.
I think, I think Commissioner James had questions about 12.01, and I want to say that with that to everybody, but I might be wrong.
And Dr. Brooks addressed my questions. Thank you so much, and thank you, Dr. Brooks.
Okay.
You're welcome.
So have we, have all the questions been covered? If so, is there a motion to approve this procurement item?
So moved, Richardson.
Is there a second?
Second by Reed.
All right, and I have to do the roll call. Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Frank?
Yes.
Commissioner James Hassan?
Yes.
Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, and also in favor, and I believe that is nine, no one opposed, and no abstentions. All right. So 12.02, there were questions around Xanadu Publishing Incorporated? Do we have staff person there now? Okay.
Hi, thank you so much, Commissioner Chinia. This is Casey Mengele, Special Assistant in the Chief Academic Office. I want to make sure that I heard the questions correctly so that I'm addressing them correctly, one being specifically about Xanadu and adding another resource for printing in light of the fact that we have Office Depot. Is that correct? I just want to make sure I'm answering the concern.
Yes.
That was what I thought I heard, yes.
Okay, fantastic. So I do appreciate that question. When we started the printing of packets centrally back in advance of our deployment on March 30th, we had originally partnered with the City School Print Shop. As a state and city-run institution, the print shop expressed concerns with its ability to fulfill our orders. So we did sort of start with that organization. Once we realized there were going to be some capacity and timing issues, we started partnering with Office Depot and were exploring additional opportunities simply so that we would be able to fulfill not only the printing need and the timeline that we face around printing, but to make sure that we were nimble enough in order to ultimately meet both the need of the staff having to develop materials in a timely way and the need to get them distributed out to schools. So in last week's distribution, as well as this week's distribution, we've partnered with Office Depot. Timing was such for the team internally developing packets that going with, for example, Xanadu for the upcoming distribution on the 20th was more timely, we could meet their timelines better. So again, we were just making sure that we have options in order to maximize our ability to get the printed materials out into the field. So having multiple printing options was really useful for us, as well as delivery options, I have to say, because they both use different delivery mechanisms. So making sure we can get things delivered to sites in a timely manner best as we can. So that's why we wanted to make sure we had an alternative to Office Depot so that we could manage that more effectively.
And this is, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So yeah, so thank you for answering that first part of the question. The question that I had asked specifically was around the actual printing because of the cost amount. I'm trying to get a sense of, based on what we've been implementing, what's been the return rate, like how much we've been producing, what's been the yield of that, and sort of like, what are we giving back? So I'm just trying to get an estimate around the quantity of the money in order to make sure, to see that it's not an overestimation or underestimation for what we need.
Great, Commissioner Brooks, thank you so much. I appreciate that. So in general, I want to, when we first started printing centrally, we based our initial guestimates around the number of packets needed. Based on that initial week of distribution, when our schools really led that effort in distributing their packets, principals gave us some valuable feedback on about the proportion of students that they had come up to their schools in order to pick up packets. So we started with an estimate of about 20,000 packets to be distributed across these 18 sites. In that very first week, the week of March 30th, we distributed almost half of those, not quite. We have since been a little bit more nimble, right? This all is a learning experience for sure. And so we've started to reduce the quantities that we're printing in alignment with where we're seeing the need and have been more nimble with our distribution to try to ensure that busier sites are receiving more materials on the front end. With regard to the return of packets, however, we are not requiring, best to my knowledge, we are not requiring the packets to be returned or completed for grading at this point in time. They're supplemental, they serve as enrichment. As of April 6th, the content within the packets, I think in Witten Wisdom, I believe in Math as well, aligned with where they are in the online learning spaces. So, you know, sort of pairing that content there. But to the best of my knowledge, the packets are really a supplemental support for our students.
So, Casey, if I could just jump in, excuse me, Commissioner Brooks. I just wanted to add that one of the things we've been discussing across the state is this idea of returning packets. So it's not just our challenge, it's a challenge across the state because we got direction from a health perspective actually not to take those packets back. So that has been part of the discussion that we've had across superintendents, across jurisdictions, and one of the things that we've been consulting with one another. So I just want to flag that as a health piece. And then we are in the process now of determining what the kind of grading process will be for work moving forward. So I don't want to kind of send the signal that it's all optional. What we are working on right now is, one, the acknowledgement that, you know, distributing grades, given where we are with the variety of, you know, distance learning pathways that we currently have going on right now, is going to make letter grading a challenge. And we are working, the chief of schools is working with school leaders and our college and career readiness team to determine what level, you know, kind of level of participation for, for students in pass/fail and that, not pass/fail, excuse me, pass/incomplete, which there's pretty good consensus across the state. So Baltimore will not be an outlier in adopting that approach. We're just looking at the particulars. So I just wanted to add that additional context to your question.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Tensalisa, for that additional add. And to that point, are we tracking, so we have the in-person, I mean, we have the packets, the hard copies, are we tracking the clicks or downloads from the, from the website, the virtuals, so that we can get a comparison between how many folks are actually downloading the packet virtually versus, you know, some of the ones that are picking up in person?
Yes, we actually are. So we have, we have data on not only the downloads of packets, but the number of logins to the Witten Wisdom videos, the Great Minds videos that we have posted. So actually, the larger question, which is one of the pieces we're wrestling with in terms of how we make sure that we are tracking the engagement of young people across the upcoming weeks, is, for example, our, our folks who view via cable. So we have less, but yeah, but we actually have numbers for downloads and numbers for folks to log into the videos online.
Great, thank you for that. And I have one more random thing. I'm so sorry.
Is it on the publishing, on this item?
Yes. So are those, like, when we're printing, are they going into multiple languages? And is that being accounted for?
So Spanish is, Spanish is, but Casey, you may know any other language.
Yeah, right now, packets are all available in Spanish. And on site, we do provide ESOL as well as special education and GAL packets across the grade bands as well. So we are, we are trying to meet the needs of our diverse group of learners.
Thank you.
Okay. So any other questions on this one? If not, is there a motion to approve this procurement item?
So moved, Bondima.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Richardson.
Thank you. And now, all those in favor, Commissioner Bondima?
Yeah, I, oh.
Okay, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Frank? Okay, Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner McFadden?
Frank is yes, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner McFadden? Okay, Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert?
Yes.
Okay, I'm in favor, is, okay, anyone opposed?
Uh, McFadden.
Okay, so we have eight in favor, and no abstentions, eight in favor and one opposed, and so this, this procurement is approved. Okay, the next one is, and the two, I think-
The next one is, and the two, I think you said, you wanted the two together? Questions around 14.01 and 14.02?
I asked you for that request, Madam Chair. This is Commissioner Roberts. Essentially, it's the same procurement, two different vendors, though. My first question, I have two questions. The first question is around the time date, the contract time date. Both of them were listed for March 26, 2020. So, the question for both of them would be, was it at all possible for us to have received that for the March 31st meeting? Because based off of today's update, the first order of seemingly the 5,200 refurbished Chromebooks have been received, and we're just getting the procurement to approve today. And then, the second question is essentially, how does centralizing the purchase of the Chromebooks affect the schools that have already, during the school closure, started to purchase their own electronic devices?
Good evening. This is Joe Vogel, the interim director of procurement. I can answer the first question, Commissioner Roberts. The City Schools regulations do allow us to make emergency procurements, and the process with that is, is when that emergency arises, we send a letter to the CEO describing the situation, and at her approval, we can act right away then. Then, the very next board meeting, we then allow, we then bring the board letter to you to let you know what happened. And in this case, with a lot of the ITD, the Chromebooks and all the IT stuff, PPEs, with this COVID-19, when we find those that we need, we really have to act on them right away, because not only are the other LEAs in Maryland vying for a limited supply, so are other LEAs in other states. So, we were able to locate these two, both NuEgg and CDI, that had the Chromebooks that we needed. We did send letters to the CEO, and she did approve them. And then, we're thus bringing now the board letter to you to let you know what happened.
Thank you, Joe. It was just a point of reference. There's been a couple procurements brought before the board previously, where the contract dates were prior to the actual approval, the board approving them. So, I just needed clarification around the start date of those two contracts. Thank you.
You're welcome. And so that you know, the NuEgg letter went to the CEO on the 26th of March, and the CDI letter went to the CEO on 3/31. And we made the purchase right around those exact same days, and so we wouldn't lose the Chromebooks.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Any other questions around this?
Yeah. Vernon Reed? Yeah. This is Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner Reed. Okay. I guess my, I'd just like to understand the, how it dovetails. Chromebooks, internet, total costs, contracts. Also, with the contracts, you have the guarantees, and also, what next in terms of your planning? You got 7,05200. What's next in terms of how many are you looking for? And also, the relationship with other partners. I read about Roger Shulman in terms of internet and Chromebooks. I hear about Kelly Hodge-Williams. So, what's our relationship with other partners in terms of Chromebooks, laptops, internet?
So, Commissioner Reed, that's a, this is Sonia Sanzalisa. So, that's a really good question, and I think part of the place that we're in now, to your point, now that we know we have secured a substantial enough number of Chromebooks to be able to ensure that our juniors and seniors in high school, which we've, you know, targeted as our first priority, and then subsequently, our high school students will be covered, I think the place where we are now is actually taking account of what the next phase will look like. And so, number one, just, and you're right to call out, the Fund for Educational Excellence has been an amazing partner, frankly, as usual, in being able to steward and shepherd a lot of the donations that we've received from the public. That dollar amount is targeting both food and technology. And so, part of what we've been doing is frankly needing to balance both of those needs, which were the expressed targets for that donated giving. So, we're balancing food needs with technology needs, and at the same time, to your point, and again, here, I want to point out the great work of our family and community engagement team that has just done yeoman's work in really trying to, one, make sure that we are aligning and coming alongside a lot of the community-driven efforts that I think we heard even in some earlier testimony, and are gaining steam across the community. And so, through Chief High Cupboard's efforts and her team, what we are trying to do now is to form a lot of those community and philanthropic efforts to now fill the holes from that initial prioritized ordering. So, that is part of the technology planning we are doing moving forward. But yes, we are taking that into account, and like I said, Chief High Cupboard has done a fabulous job in stewarding a lot of the community, broader community support and philanthropic support. Does that answer your question?
Yes. The question is, what's next in terms of your hot-button issue in terms of technology?
So, I don't think it's the one thing that is next. I think once we move, once we get a large portion of school coverage, right? So, our first priority for juniors and seniors, given their proximity to graduation. Next from that would be freshmen and sophomores. And I think now, once we move into the K8 realm, we have a much broader, and this gets to some of Commissioner Roberts' earlier question, that gets into doing a deep review, which we're doing now, of the K8 landscape, and looking then probably at middle schools and getting feedback from school leaders after this first wave of distribution and distance learning has launched. We'll be able to combine the data that we have from both the parent and family survey with frankly, school leaders and teachers, more in-depth and precise knowledge of families, just because of their relationship and proximity. So, that K to 8 landscape, we'll actually be looking at next, and I would, you know, guess we'll clearly be going to middle school, but I think then we'll have to have some discussion around, based on what the gaps are and what the need is, that we are able to meet, both through philanthropic and community efforts, as well as through, you know, any of our current distribution of technology, be able to identify some of the gaps. At the earlier grade, quite frankly, for K to 2, we are actually now doing a little bit more work about what is actually appropriate for those grade levels. There's a lot of consensus even amongst colleagues and school districts and schools, charter school networks as well, across the country. And I've talked to both, charter operators, as well as urban public school districts and other public school districts. And the consensus is throughout that with K to 2, we need to be a little bit more deliberate. Is it tablets? What skills are more appropriate? So, I was part of a discussion last night that actually was saying that for early reading, some of the best targeted work is actually on early reading skill development. But some of the other skills we want for early learners, maybe not as much. And so, I think we have, you know, for that realm, you know, for that band of students, we're doing some more in-depth work. But at this point, I would say that's what the landscape looks like, and the more targeted donations that we get, the better able we will be able to assess what the kind of final need might be for reallocation of City Schools district dollars.
And Dr. Sanzalisa, this is Tina Highcup. I just want to add to Commissioner Reed's question that we have several partners across the city who have good intentions and want to support us in our technology drive. I will say that we have a difference between refurbished devices that we are sending out to a couple of different partners to work through getting those refurbished and out to families versus Chromebooks that are purchased that are district inventory that we're loaning out to students. We appreciate both, but we are coordinating a myriad, and we've provided five presentations in the last week to different partner groups to encourage them to support us, not only financially, but also the donations. Would also add that another technology priority is getting internet access. We had Comcast Internet Essentials, who was providing our students and families across the city with two months free internet access. We appreciate that support from that partner. But we are also looking at longer-term strategies, which could also, could cause additional cost for how we provide a network of internet out from our schools. And we'll report more on that when we come, but that's another priority for us around technology.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Were there any other questions on these two items?
Madam Chair, my second question wasn't answered about the centralized procurement and how it affects schools that have already started purchasing their own devices.
Yeah. I'll be honest with you, Commissioner Roberts, I'm not sure we have a full kind of policy or way to operationalize that right now. There are schools that, prior to the COVID-9-driven closing, had made deep investments in technology already, and there are those who, because of budget size and other priorities, are, you know, much further behind. I think that is part of the assessment, and I don't think we have a definitive answer for that as of yet.
I'll send a follow-up. I have a follow-up to that, but I'll send it in writing.
Okay. And I would say that that's probably going to be a part of the conversation in terms of what a plan will be going forward, would be decentralized versus the site-based purchase of some of the equipment. Okay. Any other questions around the two procurement items? If not, is there a motion, since these two are basically around the same thing, is there a motion to approve 14.01, 14.02?
So moved, Richardson.
Okay. And is there a second?
Frank, second.
Okay. And I'll go down the roll. Commissioner Bondema, all those in favor. Commissioner Bondema? Okay. Commissioner Brooks?
Yeah. No. Are you in favor? Okay. Commissioner Brooks? And Commissioner Frank?
Yes.
Commissioner James Hassan?
Yes.
Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
I'm in favor. Anyone opposed? Or saying?
Commissioner Chinia, Commissioner Chinia, Commissioner Brooks has a question, but his volume is not working. I'm gonna, so if you can hear me, Commissioner Brooks, can you text me your question, and I could try to ask it in your place? Otherwise, we need to move forward with the vote. He said, "Okay." And should he text it to me, or should he put it in the chat, so that it's a public record of his question?
He wanted to know about the software cost.
Oh, software cost.
Hello, Commissioner.
Yeah. Can someone on the staff?
This is Michael Radding with the IT department. I'm the director of IT customer care. So, I can respond to the software question from the Commissioner.
Okay.
Certainly. So, I think one of, I think the question was whether there was additional software costs that weren't included in the board letter. And so, just wanted to make sure everyone understood that the cost of the Chromebooks includes the G Suite licenses, which are needed to centrally manage the devices. So, every single district Chromebook requires these management licenses for us to manage their settings and for us to push information out to those devices and for them to be configured based on the established district standards. So, something that is not included in the board letter is there's an additional cost for our vendor, the partner, Daily Computers, to receive the computer's image and configure them and install security and filtering software. So, there's additional software called GoGuardian that includes content filtering software to ensure compliance with the Children's Internet Protection Act, SEPA, to protect young people from harmful online content. So, Daily was not included in these board letters, because we already have a board contract for technology and related purchases, and that was what was exercised as part of this procurement for these devices. And so, all the devices are being shipped from the two vendors, NuEgg and CDI, to Daily Computers warehouse, which is local to us. They are going to then do the necessary computer imaging and configuration, and then, based on our rollout schedule that we've been working on with schools, they're going to deploy the devices a day ahead of the deployment of the devices at school sites. And so, what they do is they help to bring capacity, because we're able to very quickly deploy the 10,200 devices that we procure through the two vendors using the additional capacity, just in terms of resources and in terms of things like transportation to get these devices to where they need to go. And then, just because of the short turnaround time, too, they're able to very quickly receive them, verify that all the devices work as they should, and then install the necessary software that I just described out to the field.
Thank you. I'm looking to see if Commissioner Brooks had answered your question.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay. I missed all of that, but proceed.
All right. So, I was in the midst of the voting in favor, and I didn't hear you before. Did you want to vote in favor, or?
I did. I did. If someone could just clarify, give me a summary of like, any additional cost that we should be expecting later on. That's fine.
So, he said we already have a contract with the software company that, for the software that will be installed on these Chromebooks when they come in, we already have a contract with that company.
Okay. Great.
Oh, okay. I didn't know you didn't hear that part either. Okay. So, are we okay? I mean, Roberts' rules just went out the window, but I believe we're nine to zero.
No. Someone didn't vote. Did everybody?
Yeah. Everybody voted. I didn't hear Commissioner Brooks. Right. Okay.
Yes. I'm in favor.
All right? Okay. So, I believe we've gone through the procurement. I'm going to go back now to the item 6.01, which is the Emergency Powers Resolution. And just as, although it's been posted, just as an overview in terms of this, the resolution came as, and in fact, a couple of our procurements tonight, we're showing some of the issues. And although I know we have a policy around emergency procurements, there are lots of things that have come up quickly with this COVID-19 emergency. And so, this proposal, which is coming, is really sort of looking at that and has proposed to, and again, I'm actually going to do the reading of the resolves from the proposal. To the extent authorized by federal and state laws and regulations, the board would delegate to the CEO temporary powers to address the COVID-19 emergencies. This would, one, temporarily suspend board policies or provisions of board policies that would be necessary to comply with guidance from appropriate health or governmental authorities. or governmental authorities or necessary for other effective responses. It would, uh, it would be authority to take lawful actions necessary and related to combating the COVID nineteen pandemic, which might include things like to ensure the continuation of public education, to provide for the health, welfare, safety of students, employees, volunteers, and vendors in schools or respond to directions from appropriate health and government authorities. There are lists of things that that might include, and some we've already seen, some which, which involve canceling or modifying activities, uh, protecting the school property, and some of these have already been mandated to us, adjustment of scheduling, modifications for delivery of methods of instruction. Also that the CEOs directed to keep the board informed of any actions that are taken under this emergency authority by providing a written report to the board as soon as, as, as any of these should, should happen, the circumstance should happen. These would be updates that would be available. And also that the CEO will provide verbal summaries at each of the board meetings, which we have been doing in terms of updates. And that these powers are temporary, and they would be in effect for the duration of the governor's declaration of state of emergency. At the, at the end of that, these powers would end. And again, I'm just stressing that all of these would fall within, would be subject to current laws as well as contracts that might be, or a contract that might actually be in effect. So that's the, that's the resolution, and so I'm going to open it up for discussion from the board.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
It's Commissioner McFadden. I'm, thank you. I'm trying to, I'm trying to wrap my brain around the need for this particular resolution. I took a look at Policy DJA, the regulation which extends the CEO's authority in making emergency procurements. It's already here, and as we saw today, those things have already happened. The, a matter of being updated on things having to happen in an emergency or in a crisis such as this, they seem to already be happening within the scope of what already exists within our policies and within our laws. That govern us. I'm, I'm not, I'm not one hundred percent clear on the need of having an actual resolution to do this. I also raised a question a few days ago on how the state board perhaps is handling, you know, something similar to this, and what are other LEAs doing in regards to perhaps extending the authority of what the board is able to do to their superintendent or to their CEO. I would imagine that if the board needed to go into special session to vote on something that was emergency, I think that we all would be able to do that. So I'm not one hundred percent clear and actually comfortable with, with this resolution. Because I, I, I would like that clarity, particularly with the backend. What's the state board doing? What are other LEAs doing in, in similarity to this? And what is the true need in us creating this resolution if we already know the, the type of interaction that we currently have with our CEO and what our current laws say?
This is Joe Strick. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Well, Joe, before you, hey, Joe Strick, Joe, before you answer that, I just want to piggyback, and in your answer, can you just give us a for example? Right? Because a lot of this is, is like lawyer speak, and I just want to know, for example, what are some of the conditions that would call for her having to make a decision that she can't get to the board in time to do? So thank you for your answer.
And partially also, we, the, we're not looking at any additional policies until, you know, as Commissioner Chinia has already stated earlier with the Policy Committee, we're just meeting to plan next week, but not to review any policies. Policy approval really pretty much has been suspended until we're able to function a little differently. So I just wanted to add that, Joe, before you, you made your comment.
Sure, so we have about a hundred and twenty-ish policies on the record, and per policy, we, the compliance component is reporting out on things. So for example, we have the financial disclosure policy, which requires principals, other school-based staff, central office staff to complete this document. So basically with this powers, we would be able to postpone that without having to have a formal request to the board. So it's things like that where it's going to be very difficult in this time where we are out of our offices and out of our schools to do. So that's just one example. But I think a lot of it is just like, so that we're not breaking our own policies by violating compliance components to it. I don't foresee there being a lot of things that pop up that, you know, decisions are made without consulting the board. I think with all, you know, due respect, we will try as much as possible to bring things to the board for vote if they need to be brought to the board for vote, but just smaller things, and I need to work with the board executive as far as the reporting component, like whether we can make those documents public anytime we decide to waive or postpone a policy. But it's things like that where we don't want to violate our own policies because of the situation that we're in.
And this is Christian Gannon.
This is Bundin, okay, go ahead.
What? Oh, this is Christian. I was, I was going to add a piece. Another good example would be our appeals and hearings policy. Technically, student appeals are going to be decided in forty-five days, and we're able to get it. They, there's a lot of timelines in our policy that, again, this more guards, less to making new policy, but more guarding against the board violating its own policies because of the COVID nineteen emergency.
So, Christian, this is Commissioner Brooks.
I, I think, excuse me, I think Commissioner Bondima was next, and then I will come to Commissioner Brooks.
Okay, thank you. When we evaluate what was happening right now with the emergency that's going on right now, and the fact that we have placed confidence in our board chair, and we have reviewed many emergencies that have happened, but I don't think we've ever been at this point. I think that I'm really, after reading this document, I'm, at first I wasn't comfortable with it because different things can occur, but there are situations that we have to understand that we have to move quickly and at times and, and, and allow, allow the CEO to, or board chair to, to approve emergencies, and the emergencies that they were approved will come back to us for us to evaluate if it's done before we approve it. So, um, this is a very touchy situation, but I've seen situations like this before, and sometimes we do not have enough time to, to get information to boards before it becomes another situation.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, so I, I have a couple of concerns about this policy, particularly around compliance. If compliance is the issue, I feel like this document is so broad, it does not go into specifics, and I've only heard, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, and so I've only heard two examples, in which case, which is around timeline, and then also trying to get additional information or documentation from our financial compliance or disclosure forms. I, those two examples, while I think are important and to be mindful of, don't seem to, for me, at least, to register the need to give over that particular authority. As Commissioner McFadden had already stated, it seems like we have an infrastructure in place, a policy in place, that allows the CEO to continue to make decisions that are necessary during a moment of crisis. And so I'm interested in, so I just kind of wanted to put that out there, but then, too, also the flag that in this process of even thinking about a resolution, I would have appreciated much more of a heads up than a comment made in our last prior board meeting that stated that, oh, yeah, we might need a resolution. But that I want, I want to be a part of the creation of something before it goes into, just kind of materializes, and to try to get feedback on that. So I have a bit of an issue, not only with the unilateral, the blanketness of this document, but then also even if it's exception. And I would love to hear some commentary about sort of how that decision was.
Commissioner, I will also say that just as has been noted by Commissioner Bondima and everyone in terms of the things that have happened, that have happened so rapidly, and a time that is very different than any that we have ever experienced, that is probably why there's, there's an amount of discomfort about how this, this came about. The, it was, it was mentioned at the, at the previous meeting. We did, some of us who have been following what other districts have done outside of even Maryland have seen where folks have felt it was, it was, it was easier or it was expedient to, to be certain that everyone understood the flexibility that was being given to a superintendent or CEO during this time, and so that's why it moved the way it did. This is not the norm. This would never be the norm. We can talk about being certain that the norm follows a certain process, but this is, this is very similar to the COVID nineteen situation, so that, that's the reason. And it really is in terms of, of not having to continually, continuously call. There are things that almost happen on a daily basis that, that, that need to have some decisions made. It's, I understand that we have some policies in place and, I mean, but we also have examples where, in some cases, we don't fully understand, such as the emergency procurement we had, you know, today. This is just, this is some, some, this is Linda talking, this is some comfort and assurance for the CEO to know that making those decisions is, is, is supported by the board, and that the board will get a report on them, but that if a decision needs to be made quickly, it can be made quickly. That's, that's, that's really the basis for the resolution.
Can I ask the question?
Um, I had a question first.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Reed?
I'm directing this question to you. As Chair, what is the emphasis for you to say, we definitely need to do this?
For me, if, if, if I were as, as a leader, I would, it would, it would give me a sense of support that the organization and that especially the board of directors of the organization is supportive of me making those kinds of decisions, knows that I'm going to be, you know, going to have to do that, and that I will let them know what is happening, but that I don't have to come to them for each one of those kinds of decisions. And yes, I know that's, that's a, that should be a normal thing, but this is, some of these are happening so rapidly and so differently that I just think it's, it's just, it's a sign of support.
Board Chair?
So for me, that's what it is.
Board Chair?
Yes.
Um, this is Commissioner Lynn.
I don't know who's speaking. Please tell me who's speaking. Okay.
Commissioner Lynn.
Uh huh.
I do think that we, this is kind of a conflict within, I believe, within checks and balances when we talk about the board and we talk about the relationship with the CEO. I do understand that there are a lot of things happening so rapidly, and I do understand that there's a lot of decisions. Commissioner Brooks said those examples that were given were not examples that I truly definitely believe that should, you know, ultimately lead to this resolution. When Commissioner Bondima stated that there, you know, are things that emergency happening, Commissioner Bondima, I would like to, you know, ask you a question, and my question would be is that what emergency do you see that, you know, would not, you know, would need to happen automatically without even, you know, communicating to that board in that instance? What emergency do you definitely see that could be a possibility when we talk about this? Because if you cannot bring up a scenario of that situation, then I don't believe that this resolution is a necessity, and I do think that we need to continue the checks and balances when we talk about with the relationship between the board and the CEO office.
I think that's a good question, and as a former dean and vice president of a community, active vice president of a community college, I've seen situations where, and, and I say this because anything can happen, what's going on right now is considered a, an emergency that requires sudden, I mean, instant reaction. I was in a building where the whole building flooded, and water came from the ceiling and flooded the entire building, and we had to get up, everybody had to get out at four o'clock in the morning and call contractors to save the building, and we shut it down for six months, and it damaged millions of dollars worth of property, machines, computers, micro biology, and it went off for a while. At that moment, at three o'clock in the morning, I was sitting in Ballmer City Community College with people, and, and we had to bring people in at the last minute, and okay funds, okay, millions of dollars worth of funds to, to, to shut the building down and move people around, and I've seen emergencies that could happen, and I'm not saying this could happen here, Ballmer City Public Schools, can I finish a second? I don't, I'm not saying that that would happen, but I have seen emergencies. We're in one of those emergencies right now, but you never know. Now, I do understand if, if the CEO or the board chair has to make an emergency decision and do it right away, but she still has to, would have to answer to the board as to why you made that decision. But there are points in time when you've been in administration and in leadership, you have to make sudden decisions, and people's lives are involved. So that's, that's the point. That's where I'm coming from.
I understand solely. I also have another question. I'm sorry, before anyone else speaks.
Go ahead.
I just, um, I just, um, I just want to, you know, understand what's the point of, you know, the resolution, and I know that a lot of instances have been stated like Commissioner Bondima has said, but I do think one thing that has definitely boosted us into, you know, not having resolutions such as these, is that we do definitely have something called the virtual world. And I do think that, you know, with this happening right now on Skype and a lot of different areas and a lot of, a lot of different measures that can be taken to, you know, alleviate the, you know, non-connection to the board, you know, I don't always, you know, obviously, we're not in person, but I do think that, you know, virtually is still acceptable considering a situation such as this. So I just want to make sure that we're making sure that we're looking at all avenues and all possibilities before we lead to this. And I do also, I just want to reiterate, but I do understand that there are, you know, things that are happening, but the, you know, the examples that were given by Mr. Joseph and, you know, everyone else about, you know, legal matters, I do still not think that those are proper things that need to have this resolution in place. Thank you, though. I'm done.
I'd like to add something else. This is Bundin again. Even though we would, it's emergencies that could happen, and we have to, in the CEO or the board chair have to make decisions right away, and it's, and requires a large sum of money, they still have to report that information to the state. You can do emergency, and I'm not the budget person, but you can use emergency money, but you still have to answer to the leadership in, in the state and the board. So I'm thinking about if an emergency should happen, and we are in a situation, we need someone who can make immediate decisions.
This is Josh, this is Josh Siven, Chief Legal Officer. Might I just chime in here?
Yes.
So, I just wanted to give additional context here, and I think that this resolution is not so much about times when there can't be any communication at all, rather it's about the sweeping challenges and the quick adjustments we've had to make to move towards continuity of learning, which implicates all of the curriculum-related policies and regulations of the board, even the adjustments to calendar that we had to make while there was a specific resolution that was able to be put forward. There are other contexts, and there are other pieces of our hundred and twenty, I think somebody mentioned, policies where ordinarily, if we had the time to act, we'd look through all of them and make sure that we were checking all of them and making sure all, we were, we were acting consistently with all of them. This regulation in terms of context, I think, is really structured to protect. This regulation in terms of context, I think, is really structured to protect both the board and the school system overall as we're making these decisions that we're fully communicating, that those decisions also don't get tripped up in the context of making sure that all the regulations align as we do in our ordinary actions as a school district. So I hope that helps as just additional context.
Thank you.
And this is Commissioner Brooks. So thank you so much for adding that additional context. And so when I read this resolution, I don't get that. So maybe it needs to be reworked or reworded or reframed. What I get when I read this resolution, it reads more unilateral. For example, again, I'm always about trying to address the thing that is at hand. So if the challenge is that we're going to have all of these policies that we might be out of compliance with, well, why won't we create a moment, a resolution to sort of say, in this particular emergency state, let us just pause this and we will deal with this when we can to be in compliance. That does not require the CEO giving her additional authorities over that. She can already do her job and that's why we have her there. So in the case of emergencies, she can already respond to emergencies in real time. So if the real issue is around our compliance with our own policies, I think we could create a system that does that, that does not require sort of a pat on the back or an acknowledgement of the work, of the hard work that the CEO is doing. We got procurements. You already made an emergency procurement of Chromebooks. That came to us today and we were able to adjust. And so if Dr. Santelisus had made a decision, like that was a great decision in the time that we knew where we're going to be, we're going to need additional Chromebooks. That's a great example of things are already operating in an emergency state. So I'm just unclear as to why we would need an additional policy to acknowledge something that you already have capacity and power to do.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, I respond to the one, and again, this resolution is not a policy. So I think in some ways, what you just said actually does describe what the resolution says. It's simply that it's an acknowledgement that it is an emergency time, it's an unusual time and things might happen and that we made, so that we would know not to be looking to policies to see if everything was in compliance or not in compliance. So this is not a policy. This is simply a resolution and it has a definite end date to it. This is not overarching forever. But I don't know who the next person, I heard a voice, but I didn't get a name.
I'd like to speak after Commissioner Frank, please.
Okay, Commissioner Frank and then, who was that? Commissioner James?
Commissioner Richardson.
Okay, Frank and Richardson, okay.
Some questions and then some comments. The question is, we've heard that we believe that we already have this authority in emergency procurement, but I think this goes much beyond that, that this is much broader than just the powers that we saw today that were shown in the ability for the CEO to approve a procurement. So this is broader than that. I don't know that we don't have powers that go beyond the purchasing, I think. But I'm generally okay with this emergency authority. I too wish we had a part more in its creation, but I just believe we're in unique times and this is something that will allow our leadership to spend more time in the classroom on technology issues, on food distribution, on budget issues. I think we've built up a level of trust with the CEO and that should be considered and that this will not be abused. One question or one suggestion I have, I know there's a lot of concern about this, but the question is in its duration, does it need to have a duration that goes coterminous with the governor's emergency order? Or is this something that could be revisited at each board member so that at each board member, I'm sorry, board meeting, so that we can sort of monitor its implementation and implications?
I thought it did have, I thought it did have a term that was just for the, is that what you were asking?
Well, the way I read it, the term was coterminous with the governor's emergency declaration.
Yes.
And I'm suggesting that our approval of this could be short of that. It could be from board meeting to board meeting as we get the reports and we evaluate its implementation.
Well, I believe, Mr. Frank, this is Christian. I believe though, there is, it also says that it could be rescinded by the board upon a majority vote.
Yes.
So the board could at any meeting decide to take a vote and rescind this authority. So I don't know if it would need to be a standing item, if that makes sense.
That's helpful.
Are you done, Commissioner Frank?
I am.
Okay. I just, I'm hearing both sides of this argument and I do understand. The first thing that I want to say to our CEO is that this dialogue in no way means that we don't support you and that we don't respect the work that you've been doing already. So I don't want you to hear that from this exchange. I think that this is an example of just timing for our board and our board members wanting to kind of see things a little bit more in advance and be able to rest with it a little bit and then respond. And so I want this idea to pass, right? But I don't think the way that it's written, I don't think that it's going to be a positive result today. Perhaps we could take some more time, and I know that we're in a crisis and we're in an emergency, but I want the board to hear that it is important that we cover ourselves. And that's really what this resolution is trying to do, is that when we don't have time to dot the i's and cross the t's because of a timeline that's inside of our own policy, that we need to be able to work around that because we are in a crisis. So perhaps the language needs to be more explicit in that regard. And so I'm wondering if we could just table this, take another stab at the language, allow the board to see it, and then come back in terms of a vote.
So, Jeanette, Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
I'm willing to vote yes for it tonight. I'm speaking for Vernon Reed.
I don't know who that is.
Vernon Reed.
So is Commissioner.
Okay.
Vernon Reed's ready to vote yes tonight.
Okay. Can I, this is Bondima again, and I agree that the documents can be reviewed again and maybe make some changes and some additions, but I am, like Senator Reed, I mean, call him Senator, Commissioner Reed.
Commissioner Bondima, you're breaking up really bad. Like we can't hear anything.
You can't hear anything?
I can hear.
Can you hear me? Okay. What I'm trying to say is that I am.
Can't hear you. All right.
You can't hear me?
Disconnected.
Can you hear me?
Yes, some of us can. Go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to say that I think it's very, very important, especially with the situation that we're dealing with, that things could get worse, and I hate to say that, and I want to make sure that in case of a real emergency, which is where we are right now, we can deal with the emergency and come back and review it later.
Commissioner Chenya?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I heard.
Is Commissioner Chenya on the line?
Yes, yes, Commissioner Lynn, just a moment. Uh huh. I was going to say, what Commissioner, for those who didn't hear, Commissioner Bondima, she was saying she would like, she felt like we could deal with it now and then come back. I believe that's what I heard her saying, come back in terms of review, but because of the emergency situation, not to put it off.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Now, there's also, there's also the option of voting on the spirit of the resolution with some recommended edits to be done. So that's also an option. So I'm going to.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Roberts. Oh, wait. Joshua, you can try and speak. Joshua can speak and then I have something, Commissioner Roberts.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. So I just had a quick, I had a two-part question. The first part of the question is that, so the emergency procurement that was received today by the board concerning the Chromebooks, was that not covered within the CEO's rights to do that? Because what I'm hearing is that there's a lot of, you know, we're covering ourselves to ensure that we are properly taking a step so that way, you know, we don't cross our t's and dot our i's, you know. So was the thing that was done today, was that not covered? And if it was, what else is covered within the CEO rights now before the resolution and what is not, considering that we need this resolution to cover?
Commissioner Lynn, I heard the first part of your question, but now I can't hear the second.
He was asking what is not covered already.
Right. I was.
Commissioner Lynn, this is Christian. For the first part of your question, as Commissioner Fadden mentioned, in Policy DJA, there is explicit authority in the regulation around emergency procurement. We do not have counterparts in our other questions. So that's why the procurements are treated differently. And that's also why procurements are not part of this resolution as it, there's already emergency authority to the CEO. And again, the board's been able to meet regularly to kind of tackle those. So, but again, with all our other policies on the books, it's hard to anticipate what the needs will be, you know, moving forward.
Commissioner.
Okay.
Port Chair Chenya, this is Allison Perkins-Cowan.
Yes.
Can I jump in?
Yes.
Can I suggest that maybe a way to move forward would be to send it back to the Policy Committee to review? This started in the Policy Committee. This was not a request from the CEO. We weren't actually involved in the development of it. So I'm happy to, I think we're happy to have it go back to the Policy Committee for them to kind of revisit it and then bring it back and we can certainly be involved in a discussion about that. But I think that's where it started. So if they want to review it, they can.
Thank you. That's where I was about to go there. And the Policy Committee is meeting next week, correct?
Madam Chair?
This week.
Hi, this is Commissioner Roberts.
One second, folks. I'm getting, I'm sorry, but because I'm not on the computer anymore, I'm not really seeing you if you're saying, if you're typing. So I need you to say your name first so I can tell who's speaking. Sorry about that.
Go ahead, Commissioner Roberts.
Thank you, Joe. This is Commissioner Roberts. Picking back off of what Allison just recommended about pulling it back to the Policy Committee, if that should be the action of today, could, when it comes back, have more specificity around what this actually means, what specific areas we would be relinquishing power to the CEO to do? Because as it reads out, it is, it's a very blanket statement. It's a very blanket resolution. And I think that's what, speaking for myself, is what my hesitancy is around, as the commissioner has vocalized, lack of communication from the district prior. That's not something I'm comfortable with, the district being able to provide information as being necessary. That's something I'm not comfortable with and I would vote no today.
Okay. So, Joe, did you want to speak before I? Yeah.
This is Commissioner Frank. I just, could Allison elaborate on her comment that this is something that originated in the Policy Committee and it wasn't originated from the CEO's office?
Actually, Commissioner Frank, this is Commissioner James. Could I take that question?
Please.
Is that okay, Madam Chair? I'm going to go with yes. So it actually didn't originate in the Policy Committee. It originated last week at the board meeting. I put forward a suggestion that should we take a look at this? And I put it forward not as a yes, we should do this, but as a posed question to the group because there are policies, for example, the remote work policy that we just passed in, I don't know, I'm going to forget, sometime this fall, this school year, that said, in order to work remotely, someone had to submit a form a week in advance to their supervisor that stated what their work plan was, where they were going to work, what their accomplishments were going to be. Now, boom, everybody's working remotely. So we're in wild violation of that policy. What I didn't want us to do was end up adopting a lens of, oh, well, that's a silly little policy, so we're just going to skip over it and pretend it doesn't exist. My impetus for putting forth a question of should we consider something like this was so that we aren't just flagrantly saying, well, of course, it's easy to just dismiss a remote working policy, when in fact, once we start doing that without some sort of glue that says, okay, those kinds of policies that are sort of, I don't want to call them trivial, but they're certainly less significant than getting, you know, food safety, security and content to students, so that the superintendent didn't have to come to us with every little thing like that. So with that, I will step back off. I'm really appreciating the discourse and happy to put this back on the agenda for the Policy Committee on Wednesday.
Okay. So hearing the suggestion and just by virtue of the discussion, we're going to ask the Policy Committee to take a look at this on Tuesday. And if we need to do a special meeting, then we'll look at this, we'll bring this back to the board. If there are no other problems with that, I'm going to move us on our agenda. And Dr. Santelisus, it's time for CEO comments.
Thank you, Board Chair Chenya, and thank you, everybody. So I would like to invite Chief Grant Skinner for this evening's pep agenda.
Thanks. Good evening, Commissioners and Dr. Santelisus. We have two appointments this evening. First, Dwight Freeman, currently Assistant Principal at Paul International High School, is appointed principal at a location to be determined, effective July 1st. And second, Christopher Kelly, principal at Monroe High School, is appointed principal at a location to be determined, also effective July 1st. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Grant Skinner. And just to further give some information on both Mr. Freeman and Mr. Kelly. Dwight Freeman is returning to City Schools from Paul International High School in Washington, DC, where he served as the Assistant Principal of Instruction in previous years. He serves as an Assistant Principal of Instruction, a Dean of Students and Instructional Coach with the District of Columbia Public Schools. As a native of Montgomery, Alabama, Mr. Freeman began his career as a middle grade science teacher and previously taught for years at our own Guilford Elementary Middle School. He holds a bachelor's degree from Alabama State University, a master's degree from Auburn University, Montgomery, and an administrative certification from Coppin State University. Christopher Kelly comes to City Schools, University of North Carolina at Greensboro, where he is a continuing doctoral student in the Education Leadership and Cultural Foundations Program. Mr. Kelly has served as principal of Central Middle School in Whiteville, North Carolina, and as principal of Monroe High School, where he led MHS to obtain exceeded growth status in a traditionally low-performing school with over 1,100 students in the urban outskirts of Charlotte, North Carolina. Mr. Kelly began his career in education as a social studies teacher in Durham, North Carolina, and he earned both his bachelor's and master's degrees from the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. We want to welcome them both to the Baltimore City Schools team. Now, with regard to my remarks for this evening, one of the things that I would, I don't think we can say enough, is just how encouraging it has been to see the Baltimore City Schools community really come together in the previous weeks as we face a once-in-a-generation type challenge like the current COVID-19 challenge, the kind of whole state, whole country shutdown of schools. I have to say, I could not be prouder of how our families have stepped up, our young people are engaging, our educators, as was noted earlier by our BTU partners, have stepped up. Our principals have just been outstanding in terms of their leadership of their of their school communities. And our central support team has really been working, in many cases, endless hours to support the work going forward. And I really cannot say thank you enough. I also want to highlight our frontline workers, the folks who, while many people are able to work from home, their work requires them to be on the front line, like our school police officers who are assisting in supporting social distancing, like our school custodians and operations teams and 21st Century teams that are making sure vital HVAC projects, buildings that need to be sanitized and cleaned can continue. And then I just have to say, I am constantly, never cease to be amazed by our absolutely fearless and dedicated food and nutrition staff who are on the front lines literally daily, making sure that our young people eat, making sure that our families have access to food in this vital time. I appreciate our partnership with the city. I want to thank Mayor Young and the many agencies from Wreckin' Parks to the Office of Family and Children for coming alongside us. I also want to thank partners like Maryland Food Bank and others, local politicians who have joined within their neighborhoods to make sure that our young people and families get fed. And at the same time, that I am immensely proud of all that we have done, I do not want to underestimate the fact that we are frankly only probably through the first half of the first quarter of a very long game that we are playing, that is not necessarily a game in terms of its importance, but a game in terms of the need to be able to look down the line, to be able to learn rapidly. We still have more young people to meet, more young people to connect with. Teachers are lifting, teachers, social workers, guidance counselors are lifting yeoman's amount of outgoing communication and connection. But still, we need to look forward. Over the next coming months, we are soliciting feedback. I have a community meeting coming up this week. And really say, quite frankly, that I am encouraged, but I am also feeling and encourage us all to steel ourselves for the remainder of the time that we are going to need to band together. And I will say this, that whenever we hear from our state superintendent and our governor about next steps beyond April 24th, I don't know for certain what that will be. That is not my role, nor is it our local board's role. But I will assure all of us that the impact of this is going to require our planning, our teamwork, probably over the next year and a half to two years. And that being said, because young people being out of school has an impact. And we know from some of our most vulnerable young people in the district, all the way to my three daughters, who now unfortunately, you know, have to have me butting my nose into their schoolwork. There is no family in Baltimore City that has been untouched. And if we add on to that, the anxiety, the stress, and the grief, it becomes even more remarkable. So I look forward to the continued feedback. I look forward to what we are learning in the launching of our distant learning hub. I want to thank, again, everyone who worked. We know that we are reaching tens of thousands of our students through the 10,000 Google classrooms that were stood up in less than a week, the distribution of approximately 13,000 paper learning packets, our homework hotline that is answering, that basically answered more than 350 calls from families for assistance this first week. I also want to point out the needs of our young people socially and emotionally. And so our wholeness office and our family and community engagement, our community school coordinators, who are implementing, who are doing outreach to young people, and our wholeness office that is implementing virtual office hours. Again, all of this is really frankly, the embodiment of the blueprint work that we began just a couple of years ago, is now being put in play at an exponential level. And we will need to continue this. So I just want to thank everyone. We are taking the feedback. We are iterating and shifting along with this. And I would be remiss if I did not thank my cabinet, many of whom, frankly, I don't know if and they got four hours worth of sleep, and they have done that because of their commitment to make sure that our school teams have what they need, our school leaders, our teachers. And we do have a ways to go because this is unprecedented. But I do know that we are on a path, we are learning quickly, we are iterating, and we are implementing better and smarter with each day that goes on. So I want to thank you. And then finally, before I turn it back over to Board Chair Chinia, I do have to say that regardless of the discussion that took place before this, and I appreciated, you know, Commissioner Richardson, what you said, I just want to make very clear to the public that quite frankly, I am doing what needs to be done for kids, and we're going to continue doing that. I don't need, you know, I don't need a resolution. But I do appreciate the forthrightness of the discussion and think that it was absolutely the appropriate discussion. But we're going to continue to do what is necessary for kids and families. And that's what the board has charged me to do. And I want to thank the board for your support. And that, your leadership at this time, asking the right questions, asking the questions about now and the questions as we move forward. So with that, I will turn it back over to Commissioner Chinia and say thank you. And just remind everyone, we have a long road to go, long after April 24th comes and goes. This is unprecedented, and we will need to be planning for the long-term well-being of our students, families, and staff for a while to come. Thank you, Commissioner Chinia.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Santelisus.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Can, for Dr. Santelisus, can you speak to the updates for the meal sites that we've discussed?
Sure. So could you just let me... I'm sorry, I was finishing with my comments. Which... Oh, you mean the update, which updates in particular, Commissioner? I'm sorry.
About the National Guard.
Oh, yes. Thank you very much. I appreciate the prompt. So one of the important updates, and many thanks to Commissioner Roberts for reminding me, is that one of the ongoing challenges we have had with our food sites is being able to make sure that our own staff, our own food and nutrition staff have both the rest as well as the support that they need for that what is very much front-facing intensive work, as well as the well-meaning and much appreciated core volunteers we have, many who have cycled through to support one day, two day, a week, central office team people. What we knew early on, though, was that approach to staffing food sites that are frankly, doing more than school lunch programs were ever designed to do, but like many school districts, we are doing. We embarked on a partnership. We had support from some of our local delegation, worked with the city, and really have finally secured a partnership with the National Guard that will allow our sites to actually have more consistent support for food distribution. That will begin this week. The National Guard will be working alongside some of our staff. We will be attentive to the needs of particular communities. But we are alerting, we're working with local community leaders in helping us to get the word out. The National Guard is providing this kind of feeding support in other districts and communities across the state. And frankly, we are very appreciative of their support because it does enable us to strengthen a true continuity of support. So, and to make sure that we can continue, frankly, to make sure that Baltimore's children and families get fed. But the National Guard will be transitioning in to play a much larger role in supporting the feeding efforts across the 18 sites within the city. Commissioner Roberts, anything else on that?
I'm sorry, it was an echo. What did you say?
I just wanted to know if there was anything else you wanted me to add?
Oh, no, no, no. It was, I just wanted to make sure that we were able to offer the information on the public call.
Absolutely.
All right.
Commissioner Madden, were you going to add something?
Commissioner Chinia, thank you, Dr. Santelisus, for your comments. As a teacher who is still in the K through 12 setting, actually in the middle school setting, this period of time is quite overwhelming, this transition for all of our practitioners and stakeholders and folks that are working within any school system. So I definitely want to chime in and just say thank you to all of the folks that regardless of how overwhelmed they feel, they're still fighting and doing their absolute best to make sure that our children are well. And with that, Madam Chair, Commissioner Chinia, a voice that has not been as present in our discussions is the voice of our student commissioner. And I think that it is vital to hear the perspective of our student commissioner who is actually working. He is working and maintaining his school studies. And I think that it is important to hear the perspective of a citizen of Baltimore that is in that position, but also one of our students that is dealing with the effects of a bunch of adults making decisions for them. So Madam Chair, I would like to, if you would allow, Commissioner Lynn to actually just give us his perspective on how he's doing right now, how our students grappling. He's a junior. And so we're prioritizing technology to juniors and seniors right now, as Dr. Santelisus said earlier. But it would be interesting and I think healthy for our board to actually hear his perspective while we're meeting right now.
Commissioner Lynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to, you know, talk about a lot of the student perspective on a lot of the things that we're talking about, because I know definitely we have, you know, a lot of adults talking about, you know, making the decisions. And I just want to, you know, implement a little bit about a student's life and, you know, what's going on now in a particular student's life. I had a lot of students come to me and, you know, talk to me about, you know, what's going on there. And I have, you know, a lot of people from a lot of different schools that I talk to and communicate with. And one thing in particular that's been an issue for students is that, as we know, a lot of parents are laid off from their jobs. They don't have, you know, adequate funding to supply for their family. And then what happens is that we have students that already have jobs, and they're trying to pick up those extra shifts, and they're trying to pick up those, you know, shifts because they're essential people. Technically, they'll be in the fast food restaurant or wherever they are, just trying to ultimately provide for their family, which ultimately can become a very big burden and a very big responsibility. With that being said, also considering that we have to battle, well, sorry, balance with school as well, I do think that it is necessary for educators to understand that, you know, even though, you know, it may seem that students are at home, you know, they're in their house, they can do more work, that is not the case. We have a lot of students that are outside, being essential personnel, you know, in danger of contracting the virus. And I think that it's very important that we understand that, you know, these students are in danger as well. And I've seen it for myself personally, the abundance and, you know, amount of work that a lot of teachers are giving and the amount of work that, you know, expected of us. And I don't think that it's realistic for students. And that's across all borders. I tend to get a lot of students, they tell me that, you know, oh, the work is more than actually when I'm in school. And I tend to, you know, agree and disagree sometimes. But I have seen that trend where teachers have been given tumultuous amounts of work during this time, and it's not feasible for students to do it. I also know that, you know, considering the time that we had to exit school, it was close to, you know, third quarter, into third quarter, and a lot of work was due. And I know that it was very hard for students, especially me, sorry, including me, to get a lot of due dates in and get a lot of things switched over, considering that we were switching over to distant learning. So I do think that we need to kind of, you know, be realistic about the work that we're giving to students. And, you know, being able to communicate with them and, you know, they're not always going to be able to be in that specific date and time for that coach class on virtual learning or on that specific time for Google Meet. So, you know, it's imperative that educators and everyone around working with students that we encourage and we continue the communication line between those two entities to make sure that we're ultimately, you know, just having students giving transparency to teachers and teachers doing the same thing. I think that's the best result that we're going to get from students in the community. And, you know, like Dr. S said, we are learning about a lot of things with, you know, the COVID-19 crisis and a lot about our students and their responsibilities in life. So I do believe that, you know, it's important that we, you know, handle situations lightly and we, you know, we never know what's going on in someone's home. You know, equity is very important, and equity is, you know, different for every single type of person. So we have to understand that, you know, we have to necessarily tread lightly over talking to specific people and specific families as well. I think that's one of the biggest things that's been definitely, you know, attacking the community, especially with the 11th and 12th grade students, you know. A lot of us are worried about a lot of different things with school. But ultimately, you know, if, you know, we have families to provide for, school is definitely not, you know, something that's on their frontal lobe when they're thinking about certain things, you know, how they're going to provide with their family, how their brother or little sister is going to eat. Those are things that are realistic things that we have to think about when we're making decisions. And I think that, you know, with the board that I'm grateful for, that we have so many amazing people, and with Dr. S being the amazing person that she is, we are able to understand and, you know, understand where people are coming from in order to make the adjusted arrangements that are needed. So that's all for me. But I definitely just wanted to give that push in, because I know a lot of educators from the BTU and a lot of other educators as well are listening out there. And I just want you to make sure that you're, you know, truly listening and understanding that every student is different and every student has different situations going on in their lives. And I think that more than ever, this is a time for support. I think that more than ever, this is a time where people need to come together. And, you know, we've already came together. And I think, you know, we need to do the same for our students, you know, especially for our higher grade students where, you know, they have jobs and, you know, they're looking out for their families. So that's all. And thank you, Commissioner Madden, for giving me the floor.
And this is Vandima. I just want, Chair Chinia, may I say something?
Go right ahead.
Okay. I just want to say, Commissioner, that was a very eloquent way of saying how you're doing such a wonderful job. And I am sure the board would like to say thank you for the time and the energy and the knowledge that you pour to our board. Thank you so much.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Lynn. And hopefully, everyone is listening to what you said. This is an unusual time, and so we have to do things in unusual ways and be flexible. So thank you for reminding us all of that.
No problem.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I want to remind people of upcoming meetings. Operations Committee will be meeting. These are virtual meetings. But I know that there are call-in numbers if a public would like to listen in and be a part of them. Operations Committee is Tuesday, April 21st at 10:30 a.m. Policy Committee, Tuesday, April 21st at 3:30 p.m. The Board, Teaching and Learning, will have a meeting on Tuesday, May 5. And then the next Board... And then the next Board, uh, meeting, uh, will be on Wednesday, April the 29th. And this is a different day because when this was originally scheduled, um, it was scheduled around, um, election time. So we didn't change that particular date on the calendar. So Wednesday, April the 29th.
And Commissioner Chinia, this, this Christian is on the at-one point.
Yes?
Sure. Just that, um, we did just, um, confirm and exec, a special board meeting for next Tuesday as well, but that was confirmed before, that was confirmed after the schedule was posted. Just to remind the public for that, about that.
Okay. And that's the 20-
21st.
Okay.
At 5:30.
All right. At 5:30. Uh, but that is, uh, an executive, uh, session.
And that'll be a regular, a special public board meeting.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
Is that one, that's a, that's a board meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Roberts. Don't kill me, but I would be absolutely remiss if I didn't give, um, a shout-out to the CCAT team and to the, um, Special Education Depart- not Department, um, team as well. Yesterday's CCAT virtual meeting was beautifully orchestrated. It was very informative and very, very, very organized. Um, so I didn't want this call to end without me giving them a shout-out and a kudos to them.
Thank you. I want to, um, before, um, asking, uh, for a motion to adjourn, I wanna, um, just, this is really to everyone, to the staff, um, to the, uh, to the teachers, um, to the central office folks, to our partners, to the Board, um, CEO, um, anyone who's, who's listening. Um, I wanna end with a portion of, uh, something that I actually saw from a parent. And I, and, and it really, I think, um, I wanna share this with all of you because I think, um, everyone is really showing this. And this is a parent who says, um, please don't worry about what you're doing for our kids you're doing. You've already taught them the things that I worry about them getting out of school. This is from a parent's perspective. You've taught them that people are flexible, they adapt to new things. You've taught them that people will show up for them even when it's hard. You've taught them that communities work together for the greater good. You've taught them that the world is a good place, that even when circumstances are scary, people are good. You've loved them enough to be there, and that's all any of us can do, love each other through all this. And so folks, I'm gonna say to you all, as this parent said, uh, that we're gonna be okay, our kids are gonna be okay. Please continue to take care of yourselves, and we will continue to figure out how to, how to do, uh, this thing called education in a new way in this new time. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved, Madam Chair. Beautifully done, by the way.
Thank you. This is Commissioner McFadden?
Yes, ma'am.
There a second?
Thank you.
Yeah, Richard.
Okay, I'm gonna do this the opposite way. Is anyone opposed to that? Anyone abstaining? If not, the meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone. Have a good evening, and please take care of yourself.